Call a Planning Commission meeting to order. At this time, we need to have a nomination for Chairman Pro Tem due to the fact that our chairman is absent this evening.
I would nominate Chris Henning.
Second.
Okay, and we'll do a roll call vote. Okay, Commissioner Haney. Commissioner Graham.
Aye.
Commissioner Sullivan.
Aye.
Commissioner Trozen.
Aye.
Commissioner Henning.
Aye.
Commissioner Billups.
Aye.
Commissioner Abbott.
Aye.
And Commissioner Duham.
Aye.
So this is what it feels to set up here. I'd like to call this meeting to the Planning Commission to order for Monday, February 13th. If you stand and join us all in the Pledge of Allegiance. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to take a minute and go over tonight's agenda for those watching at home. First thing on the agenda is our consent agenda. Number two is a public hearing conditional use for Hy-Vee. Our third item is a public hearing redevelopment modification plan for Copperleaf Village Shopping Number four is a public hearing rezoning for Eagles Ridge. Number five is a public hearing planned residential overlay concept plan for Eagles Ridge. Number six is site plan design review for Hy-Vee. Number seven is preliminary plat for Eagles Ridge. Number eight is preliminary plat for Payne's Estates Lots. And number nine is a final plat for Payne's Estates Lots. Having said that, I'd like to briefly go over the procedure for the public hearings. The chairman will open the public hearing and call for exhibits from the city attorney. Any staff comments? The applicant will then make a presentation, an applicant's presentation of more than 15 minutes, then questions from the commission. Any proponents are allowed to speak, no more than five minutes per person. Questions from the commission. Opponents, again, no more than 15 minutes. Questions from the commission. Opponents, no more than five minutes. Questions from the commission and the commission discussion, and then I will close the public Having said that, you all have a copy of your minutes from the last meeting. If anybody has any changes, I would ask for a motion. All right, gonna move on to the public hearing, the conditional use. I will open the public hearing. Oh, forgot about that. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And I know Robert's rules. All right, moving on to the public hearing. I will open the public hearing. And I will call for exhibits from the city attorney.
Mr. Chairman, the city has 11 exhibits. Number one is the staff report with attachments. Number two is the affidavit of publication in the Blue Springs Examiner. Number three is the application with attachments. Number four is the 185-foot notification map. Number five is a list of names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. Number six is a copy of the letter sent to those property owners. Number seven is Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances. Number eight is the 2003 Comprehensive Plan. Number nine, 10, and 11 are letters from businesses located in Copperleaf Village Shopping Center. The first, number nine, is from Godfather's Pizza, Inc., Mr. Steve Roberts, in support of the waiver of the head-end parking and the landscaping. Number 10 is a letter from Highway 7 Chiropractic, Autumn Talon, the office manager, again, supporting the waiver of the landscaping that would affect the head-end parking in front of the business. Number 11 is a letter from Missouri Farm Bureau Insurance Services, again, Mr. Steger, a Ms. King, and a Ms. Hamm, all in support of not eliminating the head-end parking spots and not requiring the additional landscaping. Those are all of the exhibits the city would offer into the record at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Allen, staff comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission. Again, before you this evening is redevelopment modification plan. Technically, it is an amendment to the previously approved redevelopment modification plan for Copperleaf Village Shopping Center. Applicant is Kevin Fitzpatrick. Mr. Fitzpatrick is here this evening. I presume will present his comments following mine. Just looking at the screen, again, is the background. This is all in your staff report. I'm sure you're all familiar with the site located between Hearns and Artie Mize along 7th Highway. Do want to walk through some of the background. Mr. Fitzpatrick is requesting specifically four separate items be waived from the original proposal, original approval, that is, as he moves forward with completing some final occupancies within the shopping center. He's specifically requesting these four bulleted items, top of the page there, the north 146 feet, the extension of the six-foot wooden fence along the west side of the property be waived, as well as the landscaping located in the front of the shopping center building proper. The western terminus, the main east-west entry driveways be waived. At the installation of the mechanical equipment roof screening be located on the northernmost, excuse me, building addition where Center Point Clinic is now located, that that be waived. And finally, that the approved trash enclosures that were to be located behind the main building be waived as well. Staff ran down some of the previous approvals, terms beginning back in 2005. There were some additional minor amendments to some lot lines and then plats following that. Did want to note that the applicant did request similar relief through administrative process in November 2008. Was determined at that time that these requests of similar nature need to go through the full redevelopment modification plan process, and therefore, the applicant is before you this evening. I do have, it was not included in your packet, but I do have a separate site plan if you would like to look at that. I certainly could put that up on the screen. But the city did issue temporary use permit just not that long ago for the temporary parking area located in front of Center Point Clinic. So you may have seen that and wondered, that doesn't seem to fit into my recollection of the originally approved plan. That's correct. That's why it is just temporary use at the moment as the developer moves forward with additional phases in the future. That may very likely be modified. Again, just moving forward here, overall, staff recommends that the developer meet the minimum UDC requirements. That was communicated to the applicant as well several occasions. So with that, I'm sure he will be presenting his case in terms of these specific requests. However, staff is agreeable with the fence extension waiver along the west property boundary, and I'll get into details of that here shortly. And again, rather than simply waiving the dumpster enclosure requirement, staff would simply recommend a relocation of dumpster enclosures. So again, as you know, with similar developments, the trash enclosures are an important element to that, so there aren't these rolling bins just kind of floating around the center. So staff is okay with modifying the location and perhaps even style and design, just not limiting that requirement entirely, but still have some sort of enclosure at some place on the property. So in terms of applying for and in terms of being an applicable redevelopment modification plan, the applicant did meet the requirements. There's an attachment to the back. Attachment four is their statement of verification that does meet various aspects of the intent of the redevelopment modification ordinance. For example, percentage increase in real personal property taxes as well as percentage increase in full-time jobs, both well exceed the minimum thresholds to qualify for redevelopment modification plan. So the applicant is still in compliance with that portion of this option for this shopping Want to highlight specifically the phasing plan here. Again, this phase, this first phase included that addition on the north end where Center Point Clinic is now located. It is nearly complete, again, without, with the exception of these few issues here before you tonight, and they're attempting to resolve those so they can get final certificates of occupancy. Right now, there are just temporary certificates of occupancy for Center Point Clinic and that shell building itself. Landscaping, staff went through the landscaping plan and did kind of a with or without type approach in terms of if they were to follow the plan. In the next page here, lays out specifically what was previously approved and also compares it to what was, what is being proposed. So there is some reduction, you can see here with overall totals, primarily with that parking lot landscaping as it relates to those landscaping areas, those bump outs at those east-west drives along the building that the requesting are variance from. Equipment screening, again, reference that. This is simply referencing the code section and the reason for it being required and some discussion of that. Fencing, again, the same, just a little background in terms of where the applicant has made some progress from the originally approved redevelopment modification plan and actually owns some additional property and has had some discussions, dialogues with neighboring property owners to the point that staff is certainly comfortable with not requiring that fence extension any longer. Again, some dialogue discussion here on the trash enclosures. Again, not looking to, staff's not looking to recommend any waiver of the entire requirement for enclosures, but simply certainly open to relocating them from the original approval. So with that, staff recommends, as I noted, that meet the minimum UDC requirements with those two exceptions regarding location of the trash enclosures and the extension of the fence. So with that, again, there are a lot of attachments included. I can certainly go through some of those if you have any questions. The applicant did provide very complete application and provided kind of both before and after type layout. Staff did also go through the original approval and provided kind of those original modifications and waivers, and now before you are these four from the developer. So with that, sorry to be so windy, Mr. Chairman, but I want to make sure that we're kind of all up to speed since it started back in 2005, and know several of you were not on the commission at the time, so I want to make sure we're all aware of where we've been, kind of where we're at, and where the applicant is wishing to go.
Any questions for Mr. Allen?
Yes, I have a question. Mr. Allen, you don't recommend the landscaping waiver. Does that, you hadn't had the opportunity to see these exhibits that were passed out tonight. Does that have any bearing on your recommendation?
Those, yeah, all three exhibits were provided late this afternoon. Certainly understand the rationale for the businesses wanting to retain parking right along the building. However, again, as it's originally approved, parking counts are still favorable should those landscape areas be placed in front. Again, the idea was also to break up that north-south traffic beyond just those speed tables that you see so that there's some slowing of the movement and that folks aren't just racing in and running into a parking spot and, again, trying to minimize some north-south conflicts with that parking up front. Again, certainly understand the rationale behind the applicant and the businesses wanting to retain that, but again, we're just deferring to the code and the fact that these were previously approved and certainly defer to your judgment and that of the councils in terms of how you want to receive these new exhibits.
Mr. Allen, am I correct, they're wanting to eliminate the south islands but not the north ones, or is that what I'm seeing here?
Is that right? Just make sure I get to the right page here. Whoops. Can you see it here? Right here?
The south ones, the ones on the south.
Right here, you're saying?
Entry ramp. No. The southeast-west access.
Yeah.
As opposed to the northeast-southeast-west access, they're not wanting to eliminate the ones at the end of that, is that correct?
Right, right. That was my understanding as well, is that both are being requested to be removed or modified.
That's not the way it's shown on this drawing that we have, that's why I'm questioning it.
This drawing you're saying, or?
The drawing you have right there is showing the parking places on the south drive but not on the north drive.
There's a canopy bump out on the north drive that shows that as coming out, as projecting forward, and what's needed there is to install landscaping. And we can defer to the applicant as to whether or not his intent is to install landscaping, but our understanding and the numbers that were reflected in the landscape calculations did not include the landscaping that was originally proposed for the north access. And again, I'll defer to the applicant, but I think there's also parking there even though the drawing shows that as a bump out.
That's a good question for clarification from the applicant. Yeah, there is not intended to be any landscaping, but I'm not sure what the parking situation is there.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Trozen.
I want to talk a little bit about the fence. The decision regarding not to extend the fence was at approval under the Plant Commission under the previous plan, so there's flexibility to waive that requirement? Or are we waiving an ordinance requirement as far as having a fence screened from adjacent property that it looks like is used for residential purposes?
Yes, the latter, yes. Thus, the need to come before you and the city council in a public hearing format to request these variances through that redevelopment modification ordinance process because, yes, otherwise the UDC would require, it does require fencing between commercial or some screening, fencing or landscaping, I think it's in a berm, there's some different options, but some sort of screening separation between commercial and residential. So it is required, however, based on some additional ownership that was taken by the applicant as well as just conversations with the neighboring property owner as well as the topography. A fence or even some landscaping would not add any kind of meaningful screening between the two properties. There's already sufficient, you can kind of see here, quite a bit of buffering between the two, thinking about the old Walmart in the southwest lake and such where there's a drive aisle, a fence, and someone's backyard. It's, there's no buffer. That certainly is the intent of the code, and here, there's a lot more, a lot more give. You can see this whole area here is what's been added to this property. And again, here's the curb line, and so this is the whole buffered area, and there's some topography here that lends itself to being more naturally screened just as is.
Yeah, I mean, the area that you circled is their store water retention area, right, that they acquired?
That's a portion of it.
And when I was out there, I mean, I could see your, I could see your opinion if it was, excuse me, the opposite, where the shopping center was, the elevation was higher than the residential. In fact, I think we did some kind of modification on the Adams Dairy Shopping Center as it was adjacent to the clubhouse or something.
Yes, yes.
In regards to, but in this case, it appeared that the residential property, the elevation was higher, and the screening would only provide additional benefit from that residential to the shopping center. So you're saying it's not so. I mean, I know it slopes down as you head towards the street, but...
Right, and again, personally, I'm a fence guy, but in this case, the property owner resident there has indicated to staff and to the applicant that they're not interested in the fence. They don't see the value in it. They're not pushing the issue. Again, hopefully the applicant can clarify that, the discussions they've had. I've not had those personal discussions with the property owner, but I know the applicant has, so hopefully they can explain that a little bit better than I can.
And I noticed there were sections of the fence that needed repair. Would that be a responsibility of the applicant?
Yes, and there have been also, I know some, and the applicant can confirm, some defacing in the back of the building with graffiti, and we've gone through the kind of code enforcement process, and applicant's been responsive to that.
Mr. Chairman, can I follow up with another question?
Yes.
This project was a part of a tax and government financing project.
Yes.
And if I recall, and correct me if I'm wrong, but one of the proposed redevelopment costs were the power lines, the overhead power lines being underground, put underground, not correct?
That I don't recall. Jim, if you're aware of that, or?
Okay.
Maybe the applicant can respond to that as well. I apologize if I'm not.
Because I noticed that that was one of the reasons why the plan could not be complied with as far as relocating those dumpsters, it looks like, into that hillside and widening the lane.
Right.
So that you could have the enclosures behind the building.
Right, I do know there was some, again, topographical and just technical issues with trying to embed those into that hillside. I'm sure the applicant can speak to that, but certainly there's enough spacing on the entire property to perhaps locate... But certainly, there's enough spacing on the entire property to perhaps locate some enclosures. And again, perhaps not all, but at least some enclosures along that back alleyway or again, either in the north or south end as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Thank you.
I would ask the applicant to come forward and make their presentation. And being that it is a public hearing, you need to be sworn in.
I do. Kevin Fitzpatrick, 6431 Norwood, Shawnee Mission, Kansas, 66208. Thank you very much, appreciate you coming out tonight. I could give you a little bit of background here. Thank you, Scott. On the project, this project was originally called the I-70 Shopping Center. At the house of Hooch was one of the anchors when I purchased it. I brought some pictures that are a little grainy, I'm sorry, but to give you a little idea of where we started many years ago on this project. The project has been faced with some difficulties exacerbated by a couple of factors. One is a major development, which I'm sure you're aware of, and the city's been involved in at Adams Dairy Parkway, which was not the direction we were hoping the city was going. At the time we started this project, we thought they were going, things were going to 7 and 40 highway. That direction changed, that had a very severe impact on this project. And then the second is the economy hasn't been wonderful for retail shopping centers lately. As Scott mentioned, and Scott and Jim have been great to work with over the years, I want to say thank you to them. There are four things we're trying to get amended here. I was hoping that we could get amended, this amended at the staff level and not bother you with this, but we'll go through these one at a time and kind of give you an explanation of where we are and how we got here. The first is the fence, which is on the northern portion of the property, which is essentially in this portion. When we installed, when we started this project, we did have the fence planned to go all the way to the north, to the property owner, excuse me, to Harold Road to protect the property owner, Mr. Dennis Gabriel, from exposure to the shopping center. Dennis came over to me during construction and asked me to stop. So at his request, being a good neighbor, we did not put the fence in to cover his property. He uses my parking lot from time to time to unload things, groceries, materials, and didn't want a fence there to go through. So I tell you that, and I told Dennis he had to come because most people don't believe real estate developers when they tell them that kind of stuff. So Dennis is here to verify the veracity of that statement, okay? Second, the second thing we're trying to amend is the roof screening on the property on the west side. The property does have roof screening on the north, on the east, and to some extent on the south. We built this project, submitted the plans, the architect drew them up. I believe the architect made the decision that because none of the rooftop screening on the original shopping center was screened, that we shouldn't screen this. That was his decision. After the shopping center was built, it was occupied, excuse me, the existing center was already occupied. Years after it was built or months after it was built, staff came and said, hey, you didn't screen the rooftop units. At this point, it's very difficult to go into existing construction and, you know, penetrate brand-new roofs that are under warranty or somehow screen these roofs. So we're asking for a waiver from this. This is how the roof looks. I took this picture at essentially ground level. The previous one was up on Dennis's driveway, but that's the portion of the rooftop that we would be forced to screen. We think it's a little silly when the rest of the shopping center is, has the rooftop units exposed since they were built, you know, in the 1960s. Additionally, to that point, we were able to deal with Dr., or Father Farnin, and that was a long time ago, a few parishioners at St. John's La Laan, to buy this hill that is our border with St. John's La Laan. And the fence was in perfect working order in January, but there are a couple of panels. We're subject to some pretty serious soccer ball damage as they come over the fence at St. John's La Laan. So we go out once in a while and pick them up. But additionally, you can see that we have essentially almost a 40-foot rise there with a six-foot fence on top of it. So there isn't a whole lot of need from the neighbors, from the parish's point of view to screen those rooftop units. So it's a combination of, hey, we missed it, hey, the city didn't catch it. Then after the fact, they're coming back and asking us to screen those rooftop units. We're asking you to give us a variance in that. Regarding the dumpsters, we also have this situation where we're really screened from dumpster viewing by this large elevation going up the hill and then the fence that we put on top of the hill. We actually did, as Scott mentioned, did buy that ground from the parish. We asked them if we could put a fence on the top of it, and they said, sure, but you have to buy the property from us because we're tired of mowing it. So that was our deal with our neighbors, we have a deal with Dennis and a deal with the parish. So we put that fence up on top. And again, we think that the dumpsters where they are aren't causing a whole lot of problems. There was a question about the power lines. We had a deal cut with Aquila before we could to either move or bury, and frankly, it's been so long, I forget the details, those power lines. Before we could enforce that deal, Aquila was purchased by KCP Now, and KCP Now said, we're not moving those power lines. So that's why the power lines exist to where they are. And we hope to have them moved back and to widen that into a double drive, but that didn't happen. So our contention on the variance regarding the dumpster corrals is, you know, the dumpsters aren't really bothering anybody back there, nobody can really see them. And that's the reason we're asking for that variance. The fourth and last is the landscaping island in front of what I thought was Godfather's Pizza only, but I'll guess I'll agree with Scott and Jim, I'm a little confused as to where we stand on that. This is a picture today taken of basically where that landscape island would go. It would eat up several parking spaces and the tenants, as they mentioned in the letters that Bob told you about, requested that we not build that landscape and that we keep the head-in parking.
So that's a brief explanation of the four variances or amendments that we're asking you to consider tonight. Questions?
On the dumpsters, it seems to me that that's rather a minor thing to build a barrier around the dumpsters. I don't quite understand why you're objecting to that.
Well, it's just, it's an expense and it's not an insignificant expense. Pardon me?
Wouldn't be very expensive, is it?
Well, I think it's in the $10,000 to $15,000 category to build that many dumpster corrals. Then, just like the fence, there's maintenance items. The tenants, you know, would then have to, you know, their dumpsters are placed conveniently located to their doors. They'd have to go to a central, more centralized dumpster location. But again, we don't see a need for that corral.
Does each business have a dumpster behind it?
Some of the tenants share. Because of the Adams Dairy situation, we've been forced to go away from what we wanted to, which is a pure retail tenant. We've got a dance studio, a chiropractor, and then Center Point. So some of those tenants that don't have a lot of trash, as normal retailers do, that take box deliveries are sharing their dumpsters small. And as you imagine, a chiropractor's office or a dance studio doesn't go through a lot of trash. So they have no or, no dumpsters or they share the dumpsters.
Any other questions for the applicant? Mr. Trezak?
Just some clarification in regards to the bump outs. Because you proposed the plan when it went before the plant commission before with the bump outs.
Yep.
Now, all of a sudden, now we're wanting to remove the bump outs. The bump outs at that time served a purpose, and I think it was explained by Mr. Allen what the purpose was, to not only provide that flow of traffic from the north-south avenue, but also provide some landscaping and some screening similar to what you've done as far as on both sides of the drive, as well as the medians, you know, leading up through that drive. So I'm curious, as far as why now all of a sudden we want to remove?
Sure, excuse me, I'm sorry. A similar situation to what happened with Dennis. We got out there and started pouring the curbing for the landscape islands in front. And the tenants came running out and said, please don't do that, those spaces are valuable to us. We're in a very competitive business, we count on this head-in parking. So we pulled off. And then we said, well, let's see how it goes. Now, it's been four, five, six years, haven't had any traffic issues that I'm aware of out there. No complaints from the neighbors, the tenants, the consumers. And trust me, every time somebody hits a pothole or anything, you know, my insurance company and I hear about it. So we think it's a workable situation, it's important to my tenants. In a competitive retail situation, I like to keep my tenants happy and they like to keep their customers happy.
How many parking lots would be lost if you put in what was originally approved? It's just so hard to see on the map because it's so fine.
Can we say four or five? As Jim's usually correct on his guesses, I think in that range.
And that would be split amongst two different islands?
Most...
Or just one?
Yeah, I'm still not clear on what's, whether we're eliminating the islands in two places or just in one place.
Right.
It's actually six spaces that we're talking about.
Six parking spaces on how many different landscaping islands that would be at the very front, correct? The very front parking spaces?
Yes, these right in here are the ones that would be eliminated.
How many different islands? One large island?
It's right, it's one, it's six spaces wide, right, yeah.
And it would land right in front of?
Right where Mr. Fitzpatrick has shown here.
Right in front of Godfather's?
Yes. And then the, on the north end is right in front of Sprint.
On the north end is what?
Is the other landscape island, and that's right in front of Sprint. And that would also be approximately six spaces wide.
So it's 12 head-in spaces. As consumers, you drive in, everybody likes those spaces. So to put those in landscaping islands on a community center like this that's competing, one of the things we compete with with this type of shopping center is the large shopping centers where you do have to walk quite a ways to park. And so, you know, the tenants asked me to express to you that, you know, by putting landscaping islands here, it takes somewhat of their competitive advantage away.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, we thank you for your presentation and your time. This time, I would call for any witnesses who would like to speak in favor. Going once, going twice? Oh, young man, come forward and be sworn in.
Yes, I do. Dennis Gabriel, 800 Northwest Hearns Avenue, Blue Springs, Missouri. Need the zip? I would like to speak to this fence. I am opposed to fencing in the property from the backside of my house to the street. It interrupts the whole flow. And so I just, I don't want it there. It would be in my way.
Any questions?
It interrupts the flow, is that what you said?
Yeah.
How does that?
The mowing, the landscaping, we put trees in there so that we wouldn't have to put a fence. And I like the trees. I don't want a fence.
If it doesn't interfere with the flow of getting in and out of your house or anything like that?
It would. I have an east entrance on my house in the basement.
That you couldn't access if you had a fence there?
You'd have to put a gate up, and I'd really rather not have to mess with that. I like to walk through. It's not bothering anybody else this way.
Mr. Billups?
Mr. Gabriel, and I know it's not why you came up here, but since this directly affects you, can, how do you feel about the roof screening on the back of the building as far as those roof units? Because you're the one who has to look at them.
I really am not bothered one bit by that. It's on the east side of my house. There are two bedrooms on the east side of my house. The curtains are closed most of the time. And even if I do look out, it doesn't bother me. It's not an eyesore to me. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Gabriel? Thank you, sir.
How do you feel about the dumpsters?
They don't bother me either.
You like that shopping center there, don't you?
It's not my favorite thing, but it's okay.
Does anything bother you, Mr. Gabriel?
Having to come down here tonight.
Well, we thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak in favor of? Is there anybody present that would like to speak in opposition? Hearing none, I will bring it back up here for questions and general discussion. And then I will close the public hearing.
I'm inclined to go along with the contractor on this. I think we've heard from Mr. Gabriel, and they have letters that back up their position. I'm inclined to go along with what they want.
I would agree with that, I'm on record.
I would agree as well.
My only concern is that we're setting a precedent here, and the next neighbor may not be quite so understanding and accommodating.
I thought about the same thing, Mr. Billups. And having lived nearby, just off the corner of 15th and Hearns and Artimize since 1995, for many years, I take 15th and I cut down Hearns to get on the 7th highway to go places. So for many years, I go up and down Hearns and I noticed this subdivision or this development in the shopping center. And never once have I, while traveling east, have I looked to the right and have seen the components on top of the roof and thought that that bothered me. And as a planning commissioner, sometimes as I'm driving, I look out for things like that. And I am also one that has always been particularly concerned about setting precedents when we grant variances. In this particular situation with the topography and the elevation of the beginning, where 7th highway is, and then it's a gradual slope up to the parking lot, I am also more inclined to be in favor of waiving the enclosure of the rooftop mechanical equipment. And for that sake, and again, I hate to set the precedence and I don't believe that we would be, but in this particular situation, that area that runs behind there is so narrow. It's not like, it's, and plus with the fence, there's so few people that are going to see it that would be bothered by the sight of just plain metal dumpsters opposed to more open shopping centers in our city in which we do require, it's part of the code, for them to be enclosed for a reason. Perhaps my veterinarian on the outer road is a good example. Just down from Clancy's, Erickson veterinarian, you have a clear view of his dumpster and it's enclosed as you pass up and down. And here, you just drive by so quick, I'm okay with it.
I have one thought here, and I'm not saying that I'm opposed to going with what they're talking about here, but coming from a real estate background, is there any chance that the dumpsters not being enclosed, the fence not being there, or the rooftop not being screened as far as the future property values of someone that may choose to buy this home in the future? Is that going to be an issue with them? Is that going to have a negative effect on the value of that property?
That's a very good point.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I kind of agree with Mr. Billups on, on this particular case. You know, I'm, I'm concerned with, you know, the ability for property owners to negotiate, you know, situations that are variances to what the code and zoning ordinance stands for. Although I, I appreciate Mr. Gabriel's comments in regards to the fence, and that's something that we need to take in consideration. But I'm, I'm concerned that we have previously approved a plan that shows these proposed landscape areas, and now all of a sudden, we're going to remove them, you know, simply because of, you know, the tenants wanting that head-in parking in that as locations. You know, I respect their, their thoughts and, and I respect their comments, but are we looking at the overall development? And what the intent of improve, of approving this development as far as the appearance along Seven Highway, some of the goals that the city had in regards to making improvements along Seven Highway? And now are we starting the precedent of, of going along and making waivers then from some of the previous developments or even future developments? In regards to the trash enclosures, I mean, we saw how the dumpsters are lined up. Basically, the carrier comes in from the south, picks up the dumpster, drops it, heads on to the next one to the north. It, it, it seems like there could be some modifications, that there could be some form of screening around at least a couple of the sides, you know, that, that provides that type of screening, other than just letting them have no screening at all. You know, I drove down there this last weekend. The dumpsters, you know, they, they kind of moving out along the building.
They're not all symmetrical up against the building nicely?
Correct. Some, some have portable plastic containers, you know, they were, they were laying in the middle of the alleyway when I went down. So, to totally waive it, I don't quite understand, you know, without having to come back with some kind of a proposed modification. Maybe it's not all four-sided, or maybe it's some kind of a two-sided, using the, the wall of the building possibly as, as one of that third wall. Just throwing out some ideas.
And those are some very good comments, and I'll trail on that and some similar thoughts that I had in the sense that it was bothersome to me to hear that several of these items that were approved simply did not get done. And at some point, staff notified the property owner and said, hey, you didn't do this. Just because staff or the city does not catch it right off the bat, doesn't relieve your ability, your obligation that you previously agreed and was approved to do. So there's where I'm struggling along with you in the sense of, originally, the applicant was bound by these rules. And now we're being asked to waive some or all of them. I, I'd be, my two main concerns are the landscaping and the trash enclosure. Even if it's just a one-sided concrete wall in which the dumpster sits on the other side, it would be shielded from everybody passing up and down Hearns. Instead of the traditional enclosure, three brick walls and then the gates on the front. I think that there, there could be some kind of happy medium made here, and we're all concerned about precedents, but I think this is a very unique situation in the sense that we just have to find that happy medium.
I think the rooftop shield, however, there is a precedent in that the original part of the shopping center doesn't have a rooftop shield. So I think it doesn't make sense to require that for just the good part of the shopping center.
I guess I would question, especially on something like the fence, if we chose at this point to agree not to have that fence put up, and in the future, a new homeowner there may decide they don't like that open access, is there a way for that homeowner to come back and have the shopping center owner complete that fence at that point in time?
That's probably a question for staff or, or Mr. McDonald, but it would be my off-the-cuff response that the decision needs to be made amongst us, and, and the bearing of that responsibility shouldn't ultimately, ultimately be placed on a future homeowner. Any comments?
I agree.
But, Mr. Chairman, a future homeowner, if fence isn't there, would see it's not there and would have the option of not purchasing it.
That's correct.
Or say to the
That is correct.
the seller, I'll buy it if you put the fence up or extend the fence. So I don't see that as an issue. I would like to, and correct me if I'm doing this wrong, move approval.
I need to close the public hearing. So, that, thank you, though. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, for, for clarification, they said there were some trees along that hill line there. I'm, I'm not necessarily against the fence, or say that we have to put the fence up. I, I'm, I'm okay with waiving that because everybody seems to be okay with that. But I, I do think, especially on these islands, you know, we have, we have these landscape ordinances, and they're specifically tailored to renovation and, and, you know, redoing an existing. It's not like it's new construction and we're telling them what to do.
Exactly.
This ordinance was, you know, these requirements were put in there with the understanding that this was an existing facility. So I'm really hesitant to just knock those out because somebody doesn't think that they should be there. And I go in and out of that center on quite a frequent basis, and those people backing up out of those spots into that north-south traffic lane, it gets a little hairy sometimes. So having some more things to slow people down there is not a bad thing.
Yeah, and my thoughts and concerns regarding the, the plant units, seeing the photos of where the six parking spaces would be taken up, from a, from a real estate standpoint of view, and, and an owner's standpoint of view, I would think that it would severely diminish the value of leasing that space. And I think a, a fair trade-off would be instead of requiring the original approval for the islands, for the trees to be right up along the front of the building, perhaps a happy median would be to enlarge some landscape islands out in the middle. We've been told by the applicant that, and the tenants, that the parking spaces are so valuable for those tenant, for the shoppers to be able to pull, they're used to pulling right straight up. And in my opinion, a happy median would be to require the applicant to follow through with the landscaping, but perhaps in a different fashion, of a two or four different smaller add-on islands in the outside, in the middle of the parking lot, where overflow shoppers park, so to speak, or less valuable parking spaces are taken up. And therefore, the landscaping portion of the original approved application could come through two hundred percent. Mr. Allen?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, landscaping is one part of the equation, in terms of the actual amount of landscaping as you're referencing. I, I neglected to be abundantly clear that the purpose for the location of these landscape islands or bumpouts is that this east-west driveline would terminate at a landscape island, rather than having someone, for example, southbound, turning in here, and then potentially having conflict with somebody backing into them, coming into the center. So that's why they're located at the east-west drive aisles, one right here and one here. So location was, was part of it. Landscape quantity amounts, like you're mentioning, was another. So, as you noted, it, it may be possible to reclaim some of the lost landscaping in terms of numbers somewhere else in the shopping center. But there's still the issue of the possible parking conflicts with the east-west traffic. Now, there's the speed table here, and there is an opportunity for, again, folks traveling into the center to, to stop and pause, obviously. But as Mr. Fitzpatrick noted, he hasn't had any issues, as far as he's aware, with any traffic conflicts. That's not to say that there, there weren't close calls, per se, but
Sure.
That was the rationale between, between, behind the location. Just a little background again, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Mr. Allen. On the land, the landscape grid?
Yes.
It looks like they're over in landscaping. Am I reading that wrong? That they were six hundred and sixty-five units? And then there were a hundred and eighty-nine short in another place, but overall, they would be over the landscape requirement?
Yes, that is correct.
Even?
And part, part of that
Without the berm, the, the berms, whatever you want to call them, in now, are they still in excess of the landscape requirement?
Yes. Correct. No, it's a very good point in that, that was part of the, I guess, trade-offs with the original waivers was to provide ample landscaping, additional landscaping. I think Mr. Billups was kind of alluding to, you know, some of the existing shopping centers, as they get just, you know, a new tenant in place, we don't see new landscaping just showing up to meet the current code, and this was the applicant's attempt to meet or exceed that exactly in, in trade, in trading off for some of those other waivers, so.
And do we know if we've had any safety issues with the absence of those?
I can't confirm that, no, but again, there is still, in terms of traffic, mod, you know, kind of movement modification, there is, there are the speed tables there. So at least there's some sort of physical, I guess, and visual barrier, so to speak, as traffic moves in and out. However, there's, again, still the fact that, you know, it is right in front of Godfathers. And, and admittedly so, there are, there are cars parked there frequently in these three, in these six spaces. But, you know, they have to back into, partially back into or towards this drive-on. Whereas if they're parked on either side of it, there would, you know, there'd still be the opportunity, as Mr. Trozen mentioned, you know, there's still a north-south conflict, no matter what, because of all the head-in parking here. But trying to eliminate other possible conflicts with the east-west.
All right, sorry.
Mr. Allen, I'm just throwing this out right now, because I'm thinking of it. But what you, what would you think of maybe, I understand, taking into consideration the concerns of these, these tenants, maybe shrinking these islands, but not eliminating them completely, maybe just so that they're not six spaces wide? Maybe if they were only two spaces wide, but right there at the mouth of those.
Certainly, that's, that's an opportunity to do that. We're simply referencing back to the original approved plan, which did show the six spaces, so. The applicant has not offered any other alternatives, other than simply eliminating them, so. And staff has, on the other side, staff has not proposed any other alternatives either.
And if that's a method that somebody chooses to do so in, in a motion, it could always be made as an option of that or the equivalent of two times two equals four parking spaces of landscaping islands out in the middle. And we could always, we could give the, we could vote on two different options, and the applicant gets to pick one.
I, I really am, no, I'm, I'm not as concerned about the lack of, the loss of the landscape as I am about the traffic calming of having those spots right there on the end of those drives.
And that's what I would bring up, you know, we want to, want to be careful and be cautious that we don't reduce it so small that it, that it eliminates the purpose of why they're there. And that's basically to address, you know, those drives coming to the, to the shopping center.
And, and those are both, I think, extremely good, valid points, from the real estate perspective and the, and the applicant, the owner's perspective. He's losing valuation in what he can lease that space for, perhaps. There's two sides of this coin that I think are just so perfectly evenly balanced as to which way do we go. And it's, it's quite a unique situation that since I've been on since two thousand and seven, that I've not seen a situation like this in which things just weren't completed as originally approved, so we have to ultimately make a decision and for the city council to approve. Okay, any other questions or comments up here before I close the public hearing? All right, the public hearing is closed. Any other discussion up here?
Before?
Yes.
Could we have four motions? Could we vote on each of these individually?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we, I think we could. So if we want to issue, if we want to address the four issues singularly, one at a time, the first one would be the extension of the six-foot wooden fence. I would ask for a motion. Second. Okay. Roll call. Oh, Karen needs just a moment. Now that we divided up into four votes, she has some, some paperwork to do.
You said this is for the fence?
This is for the fence.
Okay. Commissioner Billups?
And the motion is to allow the variance, correct?
That's correct.
I want to be perfectly clear, aye.
Duhon?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Haney?
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
Hennin?
Aye.
Trozen?
Aye.
Hennin, you lost. I apologize.
Okay, well, I retract my aye, and I'll wait.
Hennin.
Aye. The next thing that I, I think we should address is the installation of the mechanical equipment and the roof screening. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
To, motion to?
Motion to do what? I asked for a motion. You need to make a motion. To waive the roof screening.
To waive?
Would that be the correct one?
Yes.
Okay.
Second.
Roll call, vote please.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Abbott?
Aye.
Commissioner Trozen?
No.
Commissioner Billups?
No.
Commissioner Duhon?
Aye.
And Commissioner Hennin?
Aye.
We have two noes, and it is approved.
Okay. And the next issue that I would like to move forward on is the trash enclosures, whether we require the applicant to completely enclose the trash enclosures as they were originally designed, or offer an alternative method, or approve and make a motion for one hundred percent lack thereof.
I move to disapprove that variance.
And make them comply with the original, or to make them screen it in some alternate manner?
I haven't heard them propose any alternative.
Well, it isn't the situation in which they were given the chance. The, the public hearing was closed. Since there is a motion, you can either clarify it to modify it to a more minimalized. Uh, there is not, so. Okay. That motion did not get a second, so it went nowhere, and I would open for another.
I would move to waive the dumpster enclosure requirement.
Second.
Completely?
Yes.
And Haney, second. Okay. Okay, Commissioner?
Clarification, what, how does that differ from what I proposed?
It's the same thing.
I thought you made a motion to
I thought you made a motion to not allow them to waive.
To not allow the variance.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, I would have seconded. So what is the motion?
The motion is to waive the trash enclosures altogether.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
I have a motion from Commissioner Graham and a second from Commissioner Haney, is that correct? Okay. Roll call, vote?
Roll call, vote.
All right, thank you, sir. All right. Planning Commissioner Abbott?
Aye.
Planning Commissioner Trozen?
No.
Commissioner Billups?
No.
Commissioner Duhon?
No.
Commissioner Sullivan?
No.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Henning?
No.
That did not pass?
No, it did not.
I would make an alternate motion, um, that we allow them to vary from the original plan, but still screen the dumpsters, um, with staff approval and therefore-
Perhaps like a portion of a one-wall instead of-
One-wall or a two-wall.
Two.
Pursuant-
They can still be up against the buildings.
But yet leave it up to staff?
As to exactly how.
At their discretion.
Staff's discretion, in hopes that the enclosures will stay hugged up against the rear of the building and not wander out.
One second.
Commissioner Duhon?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
No.
Commissioner Abbott?
Aye.
Commissioner Trozen?
Aye.
Commissioner Billups?
Aye.
Commissioner Henning?
Aye.
The fourth and final issue that, uh, oh, go ahead.
You're fine.
That passed?
Yes.
Okay. The fourth and final issue to, uh, vote on, and I would ask for a motion, would be the landscaping to be located in the front of the main shopping center. And again, this can be, uh, a motion for completely back to the approved version or a variance.
Why not?
Mr. Graham-
I would move to waive the, the, um, landscape curb, what is it, island requirement.
Completely.
Completely.
Second.
Roll call vote, when Karen's ready-
All right.
With new paperwork.
Commissioner Abbott?
No.
Commissioner Trozen?
No.
Commissioner Billups?
No.
Commissioner Duhon?
No.
Commissioner Sullivan?
No.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Chairman Haney?
No.
Okay, that did not pass.
That did not pass.
Has to have the landscaping unless somebody would like to make a motion for an alternative version, or is chairman allowed to make a motion?
No.
All right. Well, that concludes item number three. We are complete. We thank you for coming this evening, applicants, and those that came for that. In regards to, um, item number two, the public hearing, conditional use for high V, a question for you, Mr. McDonald. Do we need to formally close that, because that's been continued on several, several issues? Should I, we open it and close it, what formality just?
Uh, it's been withdrawn, you don't have to take any action.
Okay. No action, okay, thank you. All right. Moving right along. Number four is the public hearing rezoning for Eagles Ridge. And I would ask, uh, to open the public hearing and ask for staff comments.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, would you like to take the rezoning and the overlay concept plan together?
Pardon me?
Would you like to take the overlay concept public hearing at the same time you're making rezoning?
We'd like to do both of them together.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, the exhibits for the rezoning are, number one, the staff report with attachments. Number two is the affidavit of publication in the Blue Springs Examiner. Number three is the application with attachments. Number four is the one hundred and eighty-five-foot notification map. Number five is a list of names and addresses of property owners within one hundred and eighty-five feet of the site. Number six is a copy of the letter sent to those property owners. Number seven is Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances. Number eight is the two thousand and three comprehensive plan. For the, uh, public hearing on the planned residential overlay concept plan, uh, city has eight exhibits. Number one is a staff report with attachments. Number two is the affidavit of publication in the paper. Number three is the application with attachments. Number four is the one hundred and eighty-five-foot notification map. Number five is a list of names and addresses of property owners within one hundred and eighty-five feet of the site. Number six is a copy of the letter sent to those property owners. Number seven is Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances. Number eight is the two thousand and three comprehensive plan. Those are all of the exhibits for the two public hearings that the city would offer into the record at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Mr. Hall, you have a staff presentation for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna separate the reports as I talk about, I'm starting with the rezoning, and then I'll move directly into the, um, PRO Concept Plan amendments. So, um, with the rezoning, uh, RZ one twelve thirty-two forty-two, the applicant is requesting to change the current zoning from an MF fourteen planned residential overlay to a TF PRO or a two-family planned residential overlay. The property is shown up on the overhead, uh, is located east of Southwest Seven Highway, and it's south of Southwest Webster, within the Eagles Ridge subdivision. There currently are, are thirty-five lots, um, including three common lots within this particular subdivision. Little bit of history, uh, and this will come back again at the, at, when we talk about the PRO Concept Plan, but the, um, the property was rezoned twice. Um, originally, uh, Eagles Ridge came forward to the Planning Commission on June twenty-fifth, and was then approved by the city council on July sixth. Uh, they later came in with some modifications to that zoning, uh, and, and that was heard on November fourteenth. And the city council then approved that amendment on November twenty-first, again, two thousand and five. So some time has passed since this has been, been before you. To start out with, for the zoning, and, um, this will apply then to the PRO Concept Plan as well. Uh, the comprehensive plan, the future land use map within the comprehensive plan designates this particular area as a area of high-density residential. The high-density resi- residential, um, allows for eight units, um, eight units per acre. Uh, with the area plan, it is very similar, although it's called moderate-density residential, and it is four-two-eight units per acre, uh, is what, is what that designation represents. In this particular case, this multifamily development is part of a larger multifamily development, and we'll talk a little bit about acreages, uh, here shortly. But the bottom line is, is that this, um, change from fourplexes to two-family or duplexes does not significantly reduce the overall density of the development, and it remains within both the range of the future land use map and the area plan. Code difference between the MF fourteen zoning designation, um, is defined as, as accommodating a moderate density in multifamily development. Uh, it's, uh, the classification is applicable to lands that have adequate public infrastructure, including but not limited to roadway, sanitary sewer, water, and the like. The two-family designation, on the other hand, has a, uh, a bit of a longer description. And it talks about the potential for reducing development costs, um, and promoting affordable housing in a lower-density-type environment. Basically, the difference between the two. This particular case, staff is recommending approval of the application based on, on those items that were provided in, uh, page five of six, and six of six? Guess it's on two different pages. There's probably a way to make this screen smaller, but, um, without hitting the reduction again, and having it really be small, I'll just go up and we'll, uh, go over the first three. Again, the request is consistent with the two thousand and three comprehensive plan and the two thousand and four area plan. The zoning change is, change is justified by a changing economic conditions, uh, and the housing demand. The proposed zoning change, uh, in the area will, will not set an undesirable precedent in the city or the immediate vicinity, and staff's opinion, that, that is true as well. And all services are provided within the proposed development area. They were installed with the original development for this particular phase of the development. The zoning won't negatively impact the value of property in the city or the immediate vicinity. Those are the justifications for the zoning change. Moving on to the PRO Concept Plan. Again, the PRO Concept Plan is tied directly to the zoning, so when they came forward and talked to staff about amending the PRO, of course, one of the things we told them is that since it's tied to the zoning, you would have to change the zoning. Um, so the, so the amendment to the PRO Concept Plan really is the same as, as they're requesting for the zoning, except now we're seeing the plan for the duplexes in Phase One as opposed to all fourplexes. So it would be a combination of some fourplexes and mostly duplexes in this particular phase of the multi-housing portion of the development. For this particular, for this particular portion, um, the Planning Commission, similarly as to with the zoning, has seen this twice before. They recommended approval of the Concept Plan on June twenty-fifth, and it was approved by the council on July sixth of two thousand and five. And then it came back to the Planning Commission on November fourteenth in two thousand and five, and was approved by the city council then in November of two thousand and five. Following that, the Planning Commission approved the Phase One PRO Final Plan for single-family as well as multifamily. Let's see if we can get the map out there. Whoops, let me back up one, 'cause this shows it. Actually, this shows it quite well. You can see the site that we're talking about, um, to the north of the site, you can see the single-family lots. Um, that area that is not shaded within the shaded area is the area where the, um, some existing fourplex units, and a couple that have not yet been built but are intended to be built, sit. And the shaded area then is the area where the duplexes will be. But this does represent, this, this area with the single-family as well as the shaded in the fourplexes does represent what was the first phase of Eagles Ridge. And, um, we'll talk about some details later, but in the staff report here. But, um, for this particular, uh, for this particular portion, I'll just tell you that it is three, thirty-nine-point-one-four acres of a one hundred and fifty-three-acre development, and it was approved by the Planning Commission in November of two thousand and six. Another, I'm gonna move forward, uh, if you'll be patient with me here for a second, um, and get to the PRO plan as soon as we, here we go.
Uh-huh, getting closer.
Is that too difficult to read, should we go up one?
Well, we have it, but you could go up one, it's too difficult.
Okay, we'll just kinda stick with it right there. Although it's not directly related to this particular development, um, on page three of twelve, you'll note at the very last bulleted point, we talk about, um, the, uh, ordinance amendment, um, that was, that was passed by the city council in November of two thousand and eight. And that ordinance amendment, um, related to multifamily housing and included two-family housing. So since this particular development has gone through and went through with the, with the zoning and the PRO plan, the zoning for two-family, um, residential developments and multifamily residential developments as a whole has changed somewhat. When they came forward, they stuck close to the original PRO plan as far as, um, open space and, and as far as the landscaping and as far as the lot development, that sort of thing, really held to the original PRO plan. So you'll see that they're gonna be asking for some, um, waivers in the future, and that really comes down to now, at this point, there is new zoning requirements that weren't there, that weren't present when the original development was, was, uh, approved. And they have the ability through the PRO to ask for those waivers. Uh, moving on to page five of twelve. Some of the key information under the land use, uh, is to note that, um, uh, there's currently thirty-three fourplex buildings approved for this area with a total of a hundred and thirty-two living units. Uh, the applicant is proposing now forty duplex buildings, uh, and that will result in, in eighty living units. The land area that's impacted is approximately thirteen acres, it's thirteen-point-three-six of what was originally approved as a thirty-nine-point-one-four acre Phase One development. And of course, again, um, as we spoke earlier, the hundred and fifty-three-point-three total development area that would include both the single-family and the multifamily. The original PRO plan, um, called for a total of a hundred and six fourplex multifamily buildings with a total of four hundred and twenty-four, um, multifamily dwelling units. And I don't mean to boggle you with all these numbers, I just thought we'd, we would go over them rather quickly. At the end, if you have questions, we can come back and, and look at this. What this particular, um, proposal will result in, uh, with the number of duplexes, um, being forty, is that the multifamily, the number of multifamily dwelling units now will go from four hundred and twenty-four to three hundred and seventy-two units, but the overall, uh, land area within the development that's dedicated to multifamily residential use is about forty-eight-point-nine acres. So, a lot of numbers, um, if you have questions, we can, we can kinda go over that again. The bottom line is, is the density really isn't changing, but there are, there is a slight reduction in the number of overall units in the multifamily section of the, of this particular development. The phasing plan is, is located here. I, I really won't go through it, because the only thing that changes, um, within the phasing plan in this Phase One is really the number of units that we're talking about. We've already kind of gone over, we've kinda gone over that. The landscape plan for this particular development was submitted when the final plan came in, um, back in November of two thousand and six, and it really doesn't change with the duplex, um, with the duplexes as opposed to the fourplexes, so that remains pretty much the same. I did want to note that, on this page, you'll go down to the shaded area at about the middle of the page. It states that two-family residential development must provide forty percent open space and meet the following standards. That's incorrect. It's ten percent, not forty percent. Forty percent is something that is required with the new two-family, um, ordinance, uh, the new multifamily, I'm sorry, ordinance, under the two-family zoning designation. But because this is a PRO, they're bound to the ten percent, not the forty percent, um, for two-family. They've done an overall average with this development, uh, and they came out to eleven-point-five percent open space. The amount of open space is not changing within Eagles Ridge, it's remaining the same with this development. Streetscape trees, um, there is a streetscape planting plan, it doesn't change, it'll remain the same. The minimum setbacks, uh, with the new multifamily ordinance, the standards for a two-family district now, um, are that the minimum front yard setback, uh, for buildings would be fifty feet from a collector's street, which does not apply. Twenty feet from all other streets, but the garage would then need to sit back, um, an additional ten feet behind that to thirty feet. If you'll notice, they've proposed a twenty-five-foot building line, which means that, um, if their garages project forward, it could come within twenty-five feet of that street, whereas it should come with thirty feet. They're asking for a waiver, they're going to be, they're going to be moving their building fronts in and out, so some of them will- fronts in and out, so some of them will meet the 35, some of them will not. I'll let the applicant address that further, but they are asking for a waiver from that 30 feet. And similarly, the lot sizes, as defined in the current multifamily ordinance, would require that they have a minimum lot size of 4,000 square feet per dwelling unit, 8,000 square feet per duplex. And they are proposing, their lots are generally about 3,920 square feet, somewhere in that neighborhood, slightly under the 4,000 square feet, and that is for the duplex. So, I apologize, it's really slightly under the 8,000. What they're doing is they've set their lots up to simply reflect the footprints of the building, or roughly the footprints of the building, and all the area around that then is open space. That follows precisely what they had done with the fourplexes, where they just created a lot for the footprint of the fourplexes, and all the land around it was held in common. So it's really not changing from the original PRO, it's remaining the same, but it doesn't meet, so they've asked for a waiver for that as well. Keep moving here. Moving into the building design. The buildings as a design will obviously significantly change from a fourplex unit to a duplex unit, as you might imagine, and they provided, they provided some pictures, and the applicant may have more with him tonight, I'm not sure. But I'm gonna give you sort of an overall brush of what it is they're proposing, and I will put this picture up. I apologize for the resolution, I never could get the resolution to be very clear, but I think it will give you some idea. I think it looks better up there than it looks on the copy that I have. The general idea is to use very similar materials as were used in the fourplex. In other words, it will have stone, they will be using some stucco composite shingle roof. The one thing that they did explain to me is that not all of the duplexes will have the garages together in the center, some of them will have the garages out to the sides. The garages will project forward of the building, however, and they do plan, again, on the movement in and out. It looks like they have incorporated more of a higher-designed garage door, I think they've been called carriage doors, or giving the appearance of carriage doors. It looks like they've incorporated that into the elevation. And with that, I'll let the applicant address the overall architecture of the buildings more if they feel that it's necessary. Staff is recommending approval of the amended PRO concept plan. There are six conditions, the conditions are fairly standard. Conditions taken really from an abbreviated version of the original PRO and then applied, of course, to this particular PRO. If there are any questions on those conditions, I'd be happy to answer them, but otherwise, I'll stand for questions at this point.
Any questions from Mr. Holly? Mr. Phillips?
Mr. Holly. I want to make sure I'm clear on something, and I think you kind of touched on it, and I think it's kind of touched on here, but the reason we're seeing all of this is because of the PRO, because if it was not, if we didn't have the PRO, they could put duplexes on an MF14.
That's correct. That's correct.
They wouldn't need to come before us at all.
They wouldn't need to change the zoning. We, as staff, might suggest that they change the zoning so that the zoning matches the development type, but they wouldn't have to, you're absolutely right on that.
Okay.
Because it's a PRO, though, and because they're modifying the plan, that's why they're back before us now and changing the zoning and going through the PRO plan. In other words, they really were left with very few options. The PRO plan locked them into fourplex, yeah, to the fourplex development. In order to change the duplex development, they had to come through and change the PRO plan. And because the PRO plan is part of the zoning, and I hope I'm saying that correctly, they had to change the zoning as well. And since they were going through that zoning change, they just made it consistent with the two-family development that they were proposing.
Okay, and as a follow-up, you said that, and I'll address this with the applicant as well, that they're talking about staggering the setbacks on these things, but the drawings that I'm seeing in the packet don't show any staggering of any kind or anything like that. Can we make that a requirement in here, or something to guarantee that that's gonna happen? Because the last thing I want is a row of boxes all lined up here, which is what's drawn on the plan.
Yeah, you certainly can make that a requirement. You can propose that as a condition of the PRO plan. What they've shown on their plan really is a lot, and within that square, the building can move forward and backwards, up to about five feet, I think, you know, we can confirm this with them, but that's my understanding, is up to about five feet.
Since some of those drawings, and I can't pull it up in front of me right now, showed, you know, roof lines and things like that, there really wasn't much staggering.
Right, right.
So I want to make sure that actually happens, and I'm really going to be, you know, watching the design standard here to make sure that we, again, we don't end up with just a row of those boxes with the garages sitting out front that we have tried over and over again not to have.
Oh, I don't see the rotate button here, but I think we can see it, or get the ID even from the way it sits. The squares that they're showing right there, those squares are really representative of the lot that the duplex will sit in, but the footprint of the duplex doesn't exactly match those squares. So, to answer your question, there is, there is area within those squares for those duplex to be moved back and forth. And we did similar with the fourplexes, but we certainly can put a condition in to make sure that we get that, and I am certain that is their intent, at least the last time I talked with them, I'm certain that's their intent.
Okay, if it changes hands again, we don't want it to.
It's a good call.
Mr. Holly, the photo that you showed a few moments ago, was that provided by the applicant?
Yes, it was.
And since that's been shown, should it be entered as an exhibit?
It's not in our packets.
Yeah, it was not in our packets.
We certainly can, we certainly can call that.
Thank you.
I think that would be Exhibit One for this, with the PRO concept plan.
Okay.
Yes, you're probably right. It will be Exhibit Nine.
Exhibit Nine.
I said Exhibit One, but it's Exhibit Nine, I think we had a previous.
And that's for the overlay concept plan.
And that would be with the PRO overlay concept plan? Yes.
Any additional questions for staff?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Holly. Would the applicant like to come forward and make a presentation? And be sworn in, please.
Thank you. David Ward, George Ward Builders, 1000 South Woods Chapel Road, Blue Springs. I'm David Ward, I'm with George Ward Builders here in Blue Spring, been here since 1956, I believe, we've been developing, building here in Blue Springs. We bought these, there's 37 lots that we actually bought last fall from North American Savings. They're the ones that still own the other property behind that we were talking about, how other fourplexes are still approved on. We looked at this project, and really, the whole concept of that many fourplexes in one area is, our feeling was way too many. And I'm hoping in the future, if we get this approved, that North American will realize the same thing and possibly come forth later and try to change that, as that, you know, and actually, we're hoping we can buy it, and then at that time, we can go through it and also change through there. Again, we're taking 33 lots that were fourplexes, reducing it down to 40. We're actually reducing the area that we have purchased by 39% of occupancy, occupied units there. So in our particular, that we control, it's a pretty substantial reduction in units counts there. We did look at the pictures there, those are renderings of the complex that were, there's actually one in Pleasant Hill like this. And the only difference between this and what we're doing, the pitches on these roofs were like 512s, we're actually gonna kick them up taller, give them a profile of 712 or better. Fronts, again, will be stucco and stone. And if you look on, I think, do you have the concept plan there with you? I think if you look at the concept plan, you will see that the buildings are, if you look at the footprint compared to the lot, they are, the building line there, they are moved back. Hey, you got a small print here, let me.
It's probably a lot easier to look at.
Yeah, the building lines are moved back, each one's head is back a little bit, and this one's forward, that one's back a little bit, so on the concept plan, they already have that five foot drawn in on there. And also, the garages are split, we have some with the garages together, some garages on sides. Give this thing a break up, you know, because we've developed quite a few duplexes here in Blue Springs, and some of them are straight boxes. We're trying to get away from that, build a little higher-quality duplex out there. I mean, we're gonna be looking at rents between $900,000 aside. So we're gonna spend some money, make them look nice. But that's kind of the basic of the concept, there was just too many units, we felt, in one area there, so we're trying to reduce it down. We've talked with adjoining developers there at Eagle Ridge, and we're in the process of, right, and I know they had a question here about the homeowner association out there, there's actually, we're working on having two separate homeowner associations. Right now, it's all under one large one. The residential people are gonna have their own association, and we'll have our own association. So we can kind of, they really don't want us with their pools and things like that, and hopefully in the future, we can buy some more ground that we'll be able to have our own pool and clubhouse as this development progresses through there. Can I ask, can I answer any questions? You may have.
Any questions for the applicant?
Are you going to retain ownership of these units, or are you gonna sell any of them?
No, we're gonna retain ownership. We have right now, between here and Belton and Green Valley and Blue Springs, we have about 250 units that we own and lease out ourselves. So the intent is to keep them, yes.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this? Hearing none, anybody present that would like to speak in opposition? Hearing none, I will bring it back up here for discussion amongst us.
I think it's good that the density is less, I think duplexes are better than fourplexes, so I think it's a good move.
I echo, that was going to be my comment, is quite frankly, I'm glad to see it moved from fourplexes to duplexes, and they certainly look like very desirable, good-looking buildings. Anything else? All right, I close the public hearing. And I will bring item number four, which is the rezoning of Eagle Bridge, back up here for the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Phillips.
I would move for approval of rezoning PRO 1123243 with the six staff recommendations.
I see five.
We're voting on them separately?
This is item number four.
I thought I was looking at number four, I'm sorry.
It's rezoned, but not the PRO.
I mixed my papers up here. There are five. I've shuffled papers from far, I'm sorry.
There is five.
There are five for the rezoning.
The five or four, the PRO, correct? The rezoning does not have?
Yes, there are only five, there are just five comments.
Yeah, for the rezoning, it's the justifications for the rezoning, there are no conditions.
There are no conditions. There are no conditions with rezoning, so. It was simply, yes, exactly. What did you call them, Jim?
It's your basis for approval if you choose to.
I move for approval of the rezoning, RZ1123242.
Second. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Duhon?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Haney?
Aye.
Abbott?
Aye.
Trozen?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Hennig?
Aye.
No, we can go straight to the other.
All right, now I will bring forward, up here, any final questions or discussion before I would entertain a motion for number five, which is the overlay concept plan for Eagles Ridge.
Mr. Chair, I would like to, not that I don't trust our builders, but I would like to have something confirming that the setbacks will be staggered on those buildings.
Well, that could be included in a motion if you'd like to move forward.
You said you want a discussion before a motion.
Oh, okay. You're discussing.
I'm discussing.
Okay. Any other discussion? I would entertain a motion.
I would like to move for approval of the amended PRO concept plan, PRO C1123243, with the six staff recommendations and a seventh, that the building setbacks be staggered by at least five feet per adjacent building.
Roll call vote, please. Second?
Second.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Haney?
Aye.
Commissioner Abbott?
Aye.
Commissioner Hennig? Trozen?
Aye.
Mr. Phillips?
Aye.
Commissioner Duhon?
Aye.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
And Commissioner Hennig?
Aye.
They've passed and recommendation for approval. Right, all right. Next up, we have item number seven, which is preliminary plat for Eagles Ridge.
We won't go through all the details since we pretty much have covered them in the rezoning and the PRO. Probably the only thing that we need to note on here is that the number of lots is going from, looking for it real quick here, but I believe it's 33 to 40. And that's correct. So, we're changing from 33 to 40 lots. There is discussion in the staff report, again, about the, talking about the lot sizes, we already covered that in the PRO plan. With that, I'll just stand for any questions.
Any questions for staff? Regarding the preliminary plat?
Should note that there are, that there are being proposed four conditions, the conditions are fairly standard.
Yep.
The condition number four that talks about street-facing garages shall be setback per the approved amended Eagles Ridge Phase One PRO concept plan. I'm assuming that with the PRO concept plan, we refine, as long as they stagger the buildings, if some of those project to the 25-foot.
Any questions for Mr. Holly from the commission?
I guess just a question, on number four, then we should relate amended Eagles Ridge Phase Two. Okay, I'm clear, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Wanting to expand that?
I'm sorry, Mark, what was the question?
I answered my own question, thank you very much.
You answered your own question, okay, thank you. I'm just trying to figure out how to rotate this, if you guys want to go forward, I'm sure the applicant will come up.
It's the click of a button.
I'm sure it is. It's just which button do you click?
You, yeah.
It is not?
No.
And you can zoom in by that plus sign, or basically.
Does the applicant have anything to add or would like to add anything to your previous presentation which relates to this? Thank you. Okay, any questions or comments from the commission?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Phillips?
I would move for approval of the preliminary plat, PP 1123251, with the four staff recommendations.
We have a first motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries. Moving on to item number eight, preliminary plat for Payne Estates Lots.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to take eight and nine together?
Yes, we certainly can. Thank you, Mr. McDonald.
Are you ready, Mr. Chairman?
We're waiting on you, Mr. Allen.
All right, I'm sorry.
You have the floor.
Your head was down. I thought perhaps you were, you were looking for something else. Before you, this evening, is a request from James and Patricia Payne to plat, both preliminary plat and final plat, their newly annexed property. A property's located at 2205 Southwest Mollins School Road on the new extension, Mollins School Road, connecting to Lake It to the west. I'm sure you're familiar with this property since it was before you, for a rezoning hearing at the last meeting. Concurrent with that, it was running through process at City Council for annexation. Both those were approved last week at City Council. So now their final steps are to get the property platted and to be requested two lots. Lot one on the west and lot two on the east. Lot one is just over five and a half acres. Lot two is just over two and three quarters acres. Again, lot one has the existing single-family home on it, and lot two is intended for future single-family home, if you place on that. Again, the zoning now is RE, the residential state. Also, this is pretty straightforward. Conditions are pretty standard, with the exception of condition number three with the preliminary plat, and the same for the final plat. As submitted, the applicant did place a fifty-foot building setback line on the plat. That is the standard for residential state zoning, it's a fifty-foot setback line. However, we've been recommending that such setback lines not be placed on plats to give the property owner future flexibility. Should the zoning code change perhaps to, let's say, a forty-five-foot setback, a forty-foot setback, the plat always trumps the code, if that makes sense. In that case, they would still be beholden to the fifty-foot setback, regardless of what may change in zoning, for example. So with that, staff was making that recommendation, the applicant was certainly fine with the fifty-foot setback and was, would like to retain that, simply to avoid redrawing the plat and such. Perhaps they can respond more specifically to their desire to keep the fifty-foot setback on there. So that, that condition is just staff recommendation. That's certainly not a requirement, but just a recommendation, again, as I noted, for future flexibility, should it be needed. With that, I'll certainly stand for any questions?
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Allen?
Us?
I mean, although it may not apply to this case since we're talking two lots, but the building line would provide a continuity throughout the development, so that like, say, for example, if I bought a lot, but I sat on it for ten years and the code changed, the house next door, you know, there's not inconsistency as far as the building scape along that proposed development.
Certainly, and again, there's, there's certainly plenty of, plenty of reasons to keep the fifty-foot setback lines, you mentioned. That's certainly one of them. So simply just speaking consistency on our side to try to keep setback lines off of the plat, but within the code. Yeah, certainly, again, exactly with just two lots, large, very large lots, it's not that big of a deal. We just, again, for our side of consistency's sake, want to try to keep that off of that. So we can go to the code for setback issues and not have to go to the plat and have any kind of conflict there in the future.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Would the applicant like to come forward and make a presentation or make any comments? Anybody have any questions? Sounds like it's, we don't. Thank you. I'll bring it back up here for comments or a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve preliminary plat, PP 12-117206, Payne Estates Lot One and Two.
Staff recommendations.
With staff recommendations, three?
Yes, with staff recommendations, three.
Second?
All right, we have a motion for approval. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, we have the final plat to consider. Any questions, discussions, or a motion? Somebody give me a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the final plat, PF-12-11-3207, for Payne Estates, Lots One and Two, with the staff recommendations.
Second. We have a motion on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And we're at that point of the evening where we're done with our agenda items. Does staff have any other comments or?
Of course, Mr. Chairman.
Notices?
Yes.
We have, do we just have the one? Is it just the one? I think it's just the one.
Mm-hmm.
The one notice. ULI Urban Land Institute is hosting a, what looks like, interesting, at least to us, and I'm sure Karen had other thoughts. It was not as intriguing to her, so this is, this is for the real down and dirty urban planning type approach, looking at Fayetteville, Arkansas, and their comprehensive plan process. And again, timing-wise, it seemed to fit pretty well, just in terms of, City Council, their last work session was, or is considering moving up the timeline for updating the comp plan as well as the UDC. So this seemed to fit, timing-wise, with that. We will be inviting yourselves, as well as the City Council, to participate in this webinar, which is next Tuesday at noon. We'll be providing food, pizza perhaps, but lunch, we'll be providing lunch. It'll be at the East Conference Room, City Hall. And let Karen know, or me, whichever, if you are interested in attending, and we'll make sure we've got a chair for you. We have a big new flat-screen TV to project the webinar on, so, new chairs, so it should be, I would say movie theater-like, but if the topic is a little bit, becomes a little bit dry, it should still be a good, a good chance to get together and listen to how another city's gone through the comprehensive plan process most recently. And again, it's just a quick flyer as a reminder, and like I said, let Karen know, or myself, and we'll get you a chair.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Any other comments?
Hearing none, I have some closing comments, and I think it's rather fitting that on this particular evening, I was given the opportunity to be before you as your vice chairman. It's been my sincere pleasure serving the city of Blue Springs on the Planning Commission since, since November of 2007. I would like to thank the mayor at that time, Mayor Steve Steiner, for appointing me to the Planning Commission. It has given me a great learning and planning opportunity for the city. It has also been my pleasure to serve the city in many different facets of growth and planning, as long as I've been involved in this community. Besides being on the Planning Commission, there's two most notable things that I've been involved with that I would like to bring up this evening. And number one is closely working with the Parks Department years ago in the creation and construction and ongoing improvements to our dog park, the first dog park in Blue Springs, and might I say, one of the finest in the Kansas City area. Thirdly, one of the most important things that I'm most proud of, that I was involved with, was being appointed and serving on the Public Safety Sales Tax Initiative. I hold a piece of personal pride in my heart, having worked hard on that Public Safety Sales Tax Initiative with many others, and with its successful passage, knowing that the police officers and the residents of Blue Springs will forever be safer, and it's personally rewarding to me, and I'm sure to everyone that served on that task force. I'm proud to consider Blue Springs my hometown. It is where I've lived for the past thirty years. Besides my birth town, my birth hometown of Glendale, Missouri, I'm thankful and grateful for all the opportunities that Blue Springs has offered me with. With that, this evening, I regretfully submit my resignation from the Planning Commission, effective at the end of this meeting, due to the residency requirements that must be met in order to serve on the Planning Commission. Recently, an opportunity arose, and I took it, and I'm in the final stages of moving and the transition of becoming a permanent resident of Lake Tapewingo. With the exception of my home being located elsewhere, outside the city limits of Blue Springs, I will always be a Blue Springs resident. In my heart, it's where I grew up, and it's the city that I love. It's also the city that I will be, that I will continue to be involved with, volunteer in, give back to, and I will always buy Blue Springs every chance that I get. Having said all this, I bid a sincere farewell to each and every one of you and the work that you will follow to do, and I thank you for this opportunity to serve each and every one of you. To staff, thank you very much. And having said that, I have one more thing that I would like to end my tenure with. And everybody's familiar with David Letterman and his Top Ten. I bet you, no, it's, I, I bet you're wishing I'd ran this by Bob, but no, it's, it's good. So I have created the Top Ten Things Not to Say at a, at a Blue Springs Planning Commission. I'll provide you a copy. No, unless you think that we should. It's just fun. Okay. Top Ten Things, number ten, and this is thinking that Susan would be here this evening. Excuse me, Ms. Chairwoman, is it time for a potty break? I have to go wee-wee. Number nine, if we don't speed this meeting up, I'm going to miss the finale for The Bachelor. Number eight, excuse me, this applicant is really boring. Can we defer then to the City Council meeting and move on to the next agenda item? Number seven, after five years, where are you, Christine Kates? I'm still waiting on my paycheck for attending all these meetings. And number six, attached to the receipts for my recent trip to Las Vegas, planning the shows, the shows that I saw around the poker tournaments I played in is kind of like planning on the commission, so I think the city should reimburse me for that trip. Number five, so, my brother's a developer and applicant, my dad is the builder, my sister is the architect, and my girlfriend is the attorney representing the applicant. Where is the conflict of interest? I'm not seeing it. Number four, where's the camera? Hi, Mom! Number three, hey, Bob, as I was walking into tonight's meeting, the applicant for the new shopping center dropped a bundle of hundred-dollar bills right in front of me and then winked at me. Finders keepers, right? And number two, oh, help us, Lord, not this applicant again. And the number one thing not to be heard at a Planning Commission meeting is, may I be excused? Monday Night Football starts in ten minutes. And with that, a good night, and I would ask for a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.